Reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So we're to start tonight with public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening from the board?
Yeah, can I make a statement?
Of course.
I just want to make a statement because this could be my very last meeting, and I wanted just to thank people that supported me over the last nine years that I was in public office, and encourage everyone to go out and vote this Saturday from seven to five at TC Passios. No matter who you're voting for, every vote counts, so I encourage you to go and vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you for serving. I do want to make, I think this is the best place to do this. I have to make a couple of comments about my attendance at the Board of Assessors meeting this afternoon. And while we as select board members can't, nor can any town employee force the Board of Assessors to do anything, we can certainly register our displeasure with certain approaches. So that's the spirit that this is in. So during that meeting, it was requested that residents be provided with some kind of a letter or something that they can present to their banks, because people's mortgage payments have gone up. People who pay their taxes, people who have their banks pay their taxes. The banks have an escrow account wherein they hold money to pay quarterly taxes. Those payments have jacked up for many people, but they, you know, at this, for what for some people will be an inflated rate. So there was a request to have some kind of letter or something for people that they could bring to their banks to like sort of ease the pain of, one case where their payment is up $500 per month to cover anticipated taxes. So that was not honored. It was in fact flatly rejected, that idea. I, I mean, we've gone in some respects from the insane to the inhumane. Again, my commentary. I think that that should be rethought. I'm here to register that publicly, and I hope the Board of Assessors or somebody on it is watching. So then the next thing is, the way, I didn't even totally see how this is going to work, but there had been an outstanding request, you'll recall, about whether or not people could attend their sessions when their abatement application is going to be heard. Now, that could be unwieldy, but the solution that was offered was to have sort of people come en masse to a public comment period of, I think, an hour at the beginning of maybe just one, or would you get out of that? Or each occasion on which abatement applications are going to be heard in executive session. Well, I brought up at the meeting, the, at the point that nobody is going to stand up, so you're going to have 50 people show up if they're going to do 50 abatement applications, say, in one day, you're going to have 50 people show up theoretically in a room, nobody's going to get up and specifically speak about the details and the private information that's in their abatement application in a public setting. I think it's the wrong setting for it. Again, we can't force them to do anything. I just think it's an ill-advised approach, and, you know, it will certainly dissuade people from supplementing their abatement applications. You know, I mean, if it's, whoops, hold on, just one more, just one more. Yes, here was another request, entirely reasonable. Even if you're going to have this situation and offer the situation where you have a, people, give people the ability to comment in public, the request was made that people be notified by a letter or by some other means when their particular abatement application is going to be taken up, the day on which it will be taken up. That was refused, and it was brought up by a member of the public that, well, short of that, a person that wants to be heard is going to have to appear every single time until their abatement application is heard, which is totally unworkable. I mean, it's three o'clock in the afternoon, people are working, you know. Again, I would implore the Board of Assessors to honor that in some way. I mean, it doesn't have to be a letter, it can be some kind of posting or email blasts indicating when you anticipate taking up particular abatement applications for particular residents. That's all. I, it was, well, disheartening to say the least.
Thank you, Sleckman Franco. Mr. Alonso.
So I will dovetail or piggyback or whatever verb would be to what Mr. Franco just spoke to. I also was on the call, and the three things that came across to me as perfectly reasonable requests from people who spoke during the public comment were, as Mr. Franco pointed out, letting people know which meetings would be held when, so that people who wanted to speak on their own properties, on behalf of their own properties, could appear that night and not have to appear successive nights. Imagine you're on an agenda and you don't know where on the agenda, and we can speak about your house at any time, and you have to come meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. That seems, again, burdensome to people who are in that position. They also, in the published report from MFS, a suggestion was given that the lakefront properties be rated in three categories, and the author of the published document, which is on the town website, talks about those, that there's average waterfront, there's good waterfront, and there's below average. And people wanted to know before their hearing, could they know which one this MFS group assessed their property, so they know what to expect? That was also denied. And the last thing was, people were asking, if their property gets abated, when should they expect, how long would it be before they get refunds? And they, you know, that I don't think was known at the time. Throughout the meeting, the very short public comment of the meeting, I will say as my own editorial, and these are my words, having been through many of these, I think the meeting was once again shameful, I think it was completely tone deaf, I think it was way too rigid, it was unaccommodating, and eventually just uncaring. These, the, the people who have been on the receiving end of these large tax increases, the burden has been on them every step of the way, at every corner. They argued that their, their bills were too late, but that was late in coming, so they had to come up with money sometimes in little as two weeks. Then they had a, everybody was filing, and there was long, they knew there was going to be long extensions, so they filed extensions. And every step, there was, they were told, hey, this is what we can do, this is what we can do. Now it's something in the Board of Assessors' control. They certainly, out of the 440 or around that much abatements, can certainly organize them and tell people, hey, next Tuesday, we're going to deal with these 40 or 50, and then we're going to deal with these 40. That does not seem to be unreasonable. One could do that by hand. You don't even need a computer to do that. And that would be reasonable. Why they can't know where their property is, is on this new scale that was given by the report? Unknowable to me why you can't share that information. These are, these are people's properties, these are people's lives that have been helped, you know, affected all along the way, and now yet another, you know, challenge, another hurdle gets put in their way. I just couldn't believe what I was hearing when I heard the, when I was attending the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. You know, what was on my mind today was, was a verse from First Corinthians. Though I speak with the tongue of men and of angels, but have not love, I have become clinging, I've become clinging brass or clamoring symbols. And, you know, what that, and I don't know why that was on my mind today, but I certainly have more relevance, given this conversation, well, what's been stated in public comments tonight. You know, a lot of what we do in government, you know, we have to have within ourselves as individuals the ability to look at another person who we may not know, and treat them as our own family members, as our own loved ones. You know, it's that inner core of love that we all have within ourselves that should in many ways give us purpose in how we interact and engage with other people. It's extremely disheartening to hear, I was unable to attend the meeting this afternoon, it's extremely disheartening to hear, that the approach, you know, I would have a hard time believing that that would be an attitude one would take with their own mother, you know, their own loved ones. And so somewhere along the way, clearly, you know, the mark is being missed. You know, we all have a duty to do the best we can for the public. I mean, that's why we sign up for this duty. And it's really hard to hear, the work that I know this board is doing on our side, it's hard to hear, that this has been, you know, the crisis of the year. And the Board of Assessors needs to pull their head out of their ass and get their, get themselves together. Do we have any announcements, this, any public comments from the public?
Rhonda Lucia, 181 Reservoir Road. I just have a question regarding the agenda. Will the public have an opportunity to ask questions after the presentation by the Building Design Committee?
If you'd like, Rhonda, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other public comments this evening from the public? I feel a little sacrilegious having a swear in the midst of quoting some scripture, but all right. Any public comments on Zoom this evening?
Port of mind, First Amendment issues.
Any public comments or public comments? All right, announcements this evening, any announcements?
Just that the last yard waste day is May 20th, so this upcoming Saturday. Annual Town Election is May 20th, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at TC Passios, and the Memorial Day Ceremony is May 29th at 10:00 a.m.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. I'm really excited on the Memorial Day program. We have a really good guest speaker this year. It's a doctor, captain, chaplain, so should be a really good, good reflective speech. All right, communications from other boards. We did receive a communication, I'll read it, from the School Committee. The letter, it's dated yesterday. I like to, I wish to think this is coming from Carol Archimbo, the Chair of the School Committee. Jim, Mr. Jeffries, I would like to thank the Select Board for the funding from ARPA funds for the athletic facility feasibility study. Your support in maintaining our facility is much appreciated. As requested, please find the map of the proposed sidewalk project attached to this email. The estimate of $101,500 includes Turkey Hill Road. At the time, we discussed the need to connect the sidewalks. This map does not include Turkey Hill, as I believe most people would feel it is not necessary. I would probably still set aside $100,000 to cover the instability of material costs. So again, we have this letter, we will scan this and add it to the Google Drive, so that way it's there for next week when ARPA is discussed again.
Can I see it? I may not be here.
You may. Do we have any other communications from any other boards? All right. Tonight we have an appointment at 7:10 with the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club toll booth fundraiser request for Saturday, June the 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So please step forward, state your name, if you're a Lunenburg resident, your address.
My name is Andrew Woods. I live at 947 Flat Hill Road in Lunenburg. This is Mattie Dame.
612 Mass Ave.
We are here today to discuss the toll booth that we want to have on June 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It will be at the center of town. We have 12 bright orange cones already at the club. We have been in contact with the Department of Public Works, and they are willing to give us some more. We've also talked with the Police Department, and they're aware of our toll, and we are here to seek permission, and all the profits from this toll booth will go to our summer program this summer.
Okay. Going down the line, do we have any questions from the board?
You are aware it is graduation, correct?
Yes, we are.
I have nothing, thank you. I think this is a, this is a biannual event, so.
Yeah. Yes, I have no issue with it. All right, so you guys are trying to capitalize on all the people coming into graduation? Yep. So you'll be here before it starts, as everyone's coming in and afterwards, although those of us who live on the other side of the high school, we come, we don't come through the center of town. But I think it's a really good, certainly a lot of people, there should be a lot of afternoon, you know, luncheons, a lot of people going to Lemmonstern, Fitchburg for some restaurants, hopefully some in Lunenburg as well. So I think this is a great idea. You guys certainly know what you're doing. So for the people who will be participating in this, you guys have waivers, et cetera?
Oh, yeah, and all the participants are going to be over the age of 18 years old, and they will have their yellow vests on the whole entire time. And we have little stands that tell the public what we're doing.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the request from the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club for the toll booth fundraiser on Saturday, June 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Town Center.
Second that.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, as members are in fear of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. So congratulations, I'm sure you guys raised a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all the work you guys do to support the kids in the community.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. So for 7:15 this evening, we have an appointment with Municipal Building Design Committee. This is a representative kind of appointment. So what we are having tonight is a brief presentation, it's in our Google Drive, if you want to pull it up, Town Manager, so we can share it on the screen. I'll ask Mr. Roy to come forward, Mr. Blatt, if you're available as well, I'd like to. So the presentation tonight will be a brief review of, of where the Municipal Building Design Committee is at. It's kind of a recap of the conversation we had last fall, and I think, you know, certainly the intent is to spur some conversation here on this board. Mr. Roy.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Greg Roy, tonight representing the Lunenburg Municipal Design, Municipal Building Design Committee. It's becoming more and more of a tongue twister as we progress. And the Chair of that committee, Mr. Jeffries, asked me to give a brief presentation, so I'll keep it under an hour. I'll be really brief. I really and truly threw these slides together. I just wanted to have something before you that you could, you could kind of hang your hat on. So just a real brief overview, more for the folks at home that might be watching this or watching the recording, just a reminder of the committee's task and charge, and I pulled this right off the website. So the, your board certainly knows that our, our task and charge was modified some time ago after the initial TCP building committee was formed. And so the new task has to do with reviewing the space needs for the town offices, school uses, and community space, prioritizing and ranking the existing space usage requests that have been made over the past several years by various town organizations and departments, explore a variety of design permutations that would meet the needs of the town. Important to note that the new charge allowed the committee to analyze and discuss and investigate other town buildings, not just the TCP buildings. So we had other buildings such as this building and the Ritter and Brooks House that were in play, 30 School Street as well. Our task was to prepare viable, cost-effective solutions to present to the Select Board that conform to all the town's existing financial and fiscal policies, and to take into account large-scale capital expenditures projected for the next 10 years. So that's just an overview of sort of our charge that we've been working under over the past many months. So committee progress, and I know we came before you folks, I can't remember when that was, I think it was probably last calendar year.
November-ish.
November-ish, okay. So some of this is a rehash, but I wanted to just go through what we have done since that charge changed. And this is a real high-level view, so there was other sort of micro tasks under these, but, but from a high-level standpoint, we performed a review of the space needs using, mainly primarily using existing information that was available in previously prepared reports, such as the report that we, that we engaged through the TCP process several years ago. We reviewed previously prepared building studies, the Vertex Report, the TAPA Study, to just get ourselves familiar with what has been said relative to this building, the Ritter, and other buildings. We identified several options for addressing space needs using existing municipal buildings and properties, so taking the new charge into account that sort of, in a way widened this or broadened the scope to not just look at TCP, but to look at other buildings. We came up with several alternatives for how we would assess the needs of the town using all of the various town buildings and properties. And from there, we went through a process where we, where we looked at all of those options, and we looked for common ground themes that, that sort of existed through those options, and we boiled that down to one hybrid option. And we, I think presented that to you last, last November. So I wanted to really spend the next couple of minutes just presenting, again, what the hybrid option is, it puts a little bit more legs on it at the end of it. We're going to give you a, and I'm going to say this as many times as I possibly can, an extremely preliminary budgetary comparative cost analysis. I'm never going to call it a cost estimate. We've put together, using existing information, some costs, so that at least we have something that, that we can look at relative to the fiscal policies of the town and 10-year expenditures and things. So the hybrid concept, the rear building, under the hybrid concept, the Ritter Building would become the new town hall in the location for school administration offices, the school administration building, which will include the H program. So that would involve two, two things. One would be a renovation of the existing Ritter Building. The committee has recognized that the Ritter Building is a historically significant building, and there's no appetite for anything other than a historically sensitive restoration project on that building. We think that's the right thing to do. So that would be, part of that work would be to appropriately renovate that building, which is approximately 6,000 square feet, and then to increase the square footage to what we would need to handle the town offices and the school offices, we would construct an addition or an annex which of approximately 4,000 square feet, excuse me, to accommodate the additional space needs of all those, all those uses. The second point would be this building, Town Hall. The, the concept that the committee developed would be to convert this building wholly into a meeting house. So that would, again, involve a historically sensitive, historically appropriate restoration of this building. Again, just like the Ritter, the committee recognizes and believes that this is a historically significant building, important to the fabric of the town and the town center, and that we ought to do a good job renovating it. So we think that renovating it in the, in the plan that we're envisioning would involve renovating it into town meeting space. We would reuse this as a large meeting space, reclaim the office area that the town manager occupies, because that would now be in the, in the Ritter Building, and we would renovate the downstairs into several meeting rooms that could be used for public meetings of all kinds, public hearings through the municipal process, but also other meetings that the town might have, other organizations may have need for in the town. Third, the TC Passios kind of used for transition space, so we, we would, we've identified that obviously if you are renovating the Ritter Building, we need to find space for those folks to go. The TCP would be a great spot to do that for, from a transition standpoint, same thing with this building, if we needed that transition space. But ultimately, it would become the community center. That would involve a reduction in the square footage of that building by demolishing several portions, the north, central wings, and part of the west wing. In that space that would be saved and renovated, we would have the, we would have some storage for the town clerk, we would keep the kitchen, cafeteria, gymnasium, those are all spaces that the, the public have identified as important for various programs in town. We would have space for the food pantry, we'd have a permanent space for PAC in that building. And demolition of certain portions of the building would also allow extra space for parking, which is a known issue on the campus, not only for school functions, but also for athletic events on off-school hours. So that, that was our, that's, that's the hybrid concept relative to those three buildings. The Brooks House is still a little bit of a works in progress. We've identified a couple of things that we could do with that. One is to just simply demolish and sell it. I think we've tried to sell it in the past, and we haven't had much, much interest on the public market. Another option would be to renovate it for some school programs or another, another town use, if that, if that came up. We're not really, we haven't come up with a, candidly, the committee hasn't really come up with a hard and fast recommendation on that at this point. Last two slides are costs, and again, the, these are really preliminary, and what we've done here is to try to give each of those projects some relative magnitude of costs so that the town can start to say, okay, we're getting a sense for what, what, what we might have ahead of us. And to do that, we used existing information. The committee, since, I don't know, since, for at least a year, has not had the benefit of a, of any budget for architectural or other professional consulting support. So what we are using for this analysis, I want to be very clear, is we're using a per square foot building cost number that was generated during the TCP work that the committee did several years back. So we took the building per square foot costs that were generated from that analysis, and we accelerated them appropriately for some inflation, and we came up with a number of 545 square foot that we're using for the basis of comparative cost, cost presentation. It's really just for your board in particular, and the town at large, to take a look and say, okay, we have a rough order of magnitude, and we can see the difference between what the, what the, the Ritter renovation would be compared to this as terms of an order of magnitude compared to the renovation of the TCP. The final costs on this are going to be different than what we're presenting tonight, and I want to make sure everybody knows this, I'm going to qualify this as many times as I can for the folks at home. Final cost estimates, or even estimates that we would use to, that we would use to bring to a town meeting, will be based, would need to be based on design input from a professional, like an architect, that is down the road. So I just want to make sure everybody is understanding what we're, what we're presenting here. So applying that $545 per square foot to the various projects that I mentioned, the Ritter, in the case of the Ritter, the renovation portion of that, again, that's a 6,000 square foot renovation, would be a three-point, approximately a 3.27 million, again, it's a straight 6,000 times $545 a square foot. The addition portion would be another 2.18 million. So you have a total Town Hall cost of somewhere, estimated somewhere around 5.4 and change. The renovation of this building, which is approximately 6,500 square feet, equates to a $3.53 million number, and the, the renovation of TC Passios would equate to 13.18. And the renovation of TC Passios would equate to 13.63 million. So you have those, and again, I'll say it one last time. We're presenting these for a comparative cost analysis point, so really and truly, lots of more work would have to be developed with specific review of each of these projects to really hone in on what the actual ask would be if we ever get to a point where we're asking for that funding at a town meeting level. But it at least gives us a framework. I left it at that. I did want to say that we think our next steps, well, we think we made a very significant dent in our charge, and so we wanted to come before you and get your feedback, get your questions, and answer any questions that we can. We think that perhaps, and we'd like your input on this, that perhaps the next step in the process might be to start to develop some sort of a roadmap for how we might, the steps that we might take as we proceed through those various stages. You can see that each of the projects is independent and separate from each other. So unlike the renovation, the complete renovation of the TCP that was presented or the reconstruction of it, you could, you could spread out the cost over a much longer period of time, which has the benefit of perhaps, again, the analysis hasn't been done, of aligning with the 10-year capital projections that we have for things coming down the pipe. I know that lots of other input from finance and school committee and things might be needed for that. But that is it. Happy to take comments and, to maximum extent possible, answer questions.
I want to offer just a couple other additional comments. So first, Mr. Roy, thank you so much for this presentation. Clearly, you're very skilled at presenting this kind of information to boards, so I want to thank you for that and all the work the committee has done to help arrive at this point. You know, I wanted to speak to where we kind of, in our process, how we identified ways to save money. You know, one of the things was looking at this Town Hall in particular, going with the meeting house concept. That goes back to our, you know, original New England roots. But when you look at this building, it's really providing those engineering supports that helps this building, you know, structural supports to get this building to last for hundreds more years. And I think in the spirit of preservation, we also recognize that continuing the use of the building but also decreasing a bit of the foot traffic would have a positive impact on the long-term use of the property. So as we look at what to do here, we know that a lot of what we're speaking of is really making open rooms. And so, you know, in that process, there's cost savings there. One of the big things that came up in the last process was the TC Passios building and us being hit with these extremely expensive code upgrades. And I believe that that came to about 13 million of that total dollar amount was just, you know, required code upgrades. So we had a conversation with the Building Commissioner to go over kind of what is a good process. And I think our, one of our key takeaways from that was, let's leave the whole building standing while we renovate a smaller portion of it. That then gives a, that will not trigger all those code upgrades. That will save us a significant amount of money. And then when we finish that, then we tear the rest of the building down that we don't need. And so there is kind of a way around us having to expend that excessive amount of money, given that what remains as the footprint would be much smaller. And so we see that as another potential, you know, really big savings. And then keeping that building, again, a more minimal, a more minimal use. And then looking at the Ritter Building, and again, I think the idea there was to really figure out, as we worked with the planning board in some capacity, we worked with the school committee, was figuring out kind of what those barriers were for that building to be utilized and kind of overcoming them, recognizing that Ritter would be a pretty substantial renovation. But with the available square footage that we have, you know, one of the advice that we were given from, I believe it was from Mr. Skol and Brini and also from the Building Commissioner, is that it's important for new construction to look distinctively different than the historic structure. And so I think what we identified was having, having two separate buildings conjoined, but really, you know, two different buildings over there. And on that same parcel, which is very similar to something that was proposed previously. So I just want to give the board a lot of kudos. I know a lot of work went into trying to find strategic ways to really cut down on cost here and also maintain the use of the buildings that we know that people have come to love and really value looking at. And with that extra commentary, I'll stop and turn to the board for comments and questions.
Thank you for that presentation. I just have a question. What are the next steps for this board? So what are you looking to do next?
For, next steps for the, for the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee?
MBDC.
Yeah. Well, in part, that's why we're here, to solicit your feedback in that endeavor. We feel like we are at a point where we need to dial that in a bit, and we're at your service. As I've said in the past, we serve at the pleasure of the board, so we do feel like we need a little input. But as I suggested, I think, we've discussed at the, in our meetings more recently, that perhaps a roadmap for how we would put this into place, you know. We do step one, it's preceded by step two, which might be X number of months later, which might be in fiscal year or whatever, you know, this kind of thing, and see how that dovetails in with our fiscal policies, of which I am no expert, so. And how it dovetails into other capital projects that we know we have on the horizon. I mean, I think the elephant in the room is what we need to do with the Turkey Hill School, so, and others that you folks may be aware of. So that, that's our sense of what might be next, because I think that the next time we present this sort of public meeting, we're getting the sense over years of presenting this type, this type of, these type of projects, is that the town doesn't really have an appetite for just not knowing the master plan. So we feel like perhaps the best move would be to really do some due diligence on that, try to take a good stab, I'll say, but really prepare a good roadmap that makes sense with fiscal policy and we can lay that out in some fashion at perhaps a town meeting. But we are open to other direction that you folks may feel we need to take.
Are you looking for any funding?
We will, so we will need funding. If we decide to embark on one of these projects, we would need, you know, we would need to start advancing design plans, which would require the help of a, of an architectural team, so that would require, would require some funding. But I guess that's my point, is when we go to ask for that, right, at a town meeting, we, the discussion at the, at the board, at the committee level has been that perhaps we ought to have the roadmap so that the town, we can present that, how it fits into the bigger picture, so that we're not just going in and asking for
Money.
what seems to be a tangential piece of a bigger puzzle that isn't being communicated. So that's just our thought.
Thank you very much for the update here. And, you know, right from the, out of the gate, going back to the fall, I've been a fan of some kind of hybrid plan because it does make use of these old historic buildings. We don't, you know, and not risk creating another 30th School Street. We don't want to do that with Town Hall and Ritter. So preserving these and using them in some way, capacity is of critical importance to me, so. But I do appreciate the work that's been done here in putting numbers, you know, preliminary, very, very preliminary, I understand, yep. And so I appreciate the work that's ongoing and has gone into this, and I realize that you, there are various experts. We've got an engineer, we've got a property manager, we've got an architectural preservationist. But if you want real solutions from real geniuses, you got to go to Facebook.
Okay. Point noted.
So I'll echo my colleagues' thanks for the committee, to Mr. Jeffries as chair, and the members in the audience, and the members who are not here. You know, this, I don't have to tell you what an overwhelming Herculean kind of task this has been and continues to be because it just has so many moving pieces. So thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Roy, for the brevity of several slides that capture the essence of what you're trying to do, which I think is really important. Otherwise, it gets too confusing and overwhelming. I only have a couple of questions. The first one is, in the community center, I did not mention, I did not see any mention of, but I know it's been talked about many, many times in the past, going back to the beginning of this process, in all the predecessor committees before it, about that the Boys and Girls Club, who we just heard from tonight for their fundraising, is running out of space. Has that been considered in there? I didn't see it listed, maybe ran out of place on the slide, maybe it has, maybe it hasn't, I just forget to ask.
Yeah, that's a great question. When we were going way back to when, when we're doing sort of the public outreach process after, for the initial TCP process, we did get an articulated deed from Boys and Girls Club. As it turned out, when we sort of weighed all of the space needs, they didn't have a spot in that building, as you recall, in the renovated TCP building. Someone else can jump in here.
I'll jump in here.
Right, okay, if you want to jump.
Yeah, I know Mr. Black can probably jump in too. So we've had, you know, in our meeting, in our meetings, there's been really strong advocacy for more space for the Boys and Girls Club, and I think that what it kind of comes down to is really dollars and cents, to be quite direct, that when we talk about renovating, we talk about renovating a space, you know, when you're looking at a price tag that's in the $500 per square foot range, that there is a concern about, and I know I've voiced it, that I certainly support the expansion, but there is a concern about how much that's going to cost. And will we get community support for that? And I think that we're a bit split. Certainly, the Boys and Girls Club is a, is a really important program in town that certainly needs more square footage, and I think it's a growing need. I think that one of our approaches, and this was commented on by many people from the public, was that, I think the perception was that we were taking a 55,000-square-foot building and we were stuffing it to the rim, and without kind of doing a more in-depth analysis of what it is that the town critically needs. So I think that if this board gives the feedback that, hey, we need to definitely make room for the Boys and Girls Club expansion, then I think that that's something that the Municipal Building Design Committee will hear and take. But at this point, we did not identify additional square footage related to that, and as I recall, the request was pretty substantial. I think the minimum was 6,000 and the maximum was 10,000 square feet. And we are looking at, again, $500 per square foot cost, we're in the multiple millions of dollars for that. Mr. Black, do you want to add more to that?
Sure. Dave Black for Levin Goodrich, Vice Chair of the Committee. One of the big things that the committee looked at, especially the idea of the community space, as well as this building with the meeting space, was to provide multiple usages, try to get the most use out of a building that we could that would be things. So the idea would be, is the Boys and Girls Club, one of the things they look at is having like a, maybe a quiet space for the kids to study, which could be this, possibly this meeting space here. And then also, you know, the idea of a gym or something, area like that, that they can go to on a, say, a rainy day or something where they're going out, coming out of the walls there, and they can maybe utilize the gym or something into the community center. So seeing the proximity of the Boys and Girls Club to these two buildings, we thought it would be prudent that we kind of looked at this as multi-use buildings, trying to get the most out of the idea of, you know, using it for the community, not just one group or another, but that every individual in this town could get a use out of these buildings.
Thank you. Just as an aside, as a follow-up, I would advocate to see if we could do it. I mean, those, those uses are what they're already doing, and I know that splits up their employees, and they have to hire more people because when they're not onsite or near site, it, you know, then they have to provide somebody to go to the library or to go to the gym now. But anyway, I just figured I'd ask.
So the other thing was that, one of the things that we realized from the old committee, and we started to talk when we were the old committee, was, you know, there's not really much, well, there's, there's a concern in this town for vacant buildings. And that was one of the things we had to take into consideration, is trying not to create more vacant buildings that this town had to deal with. So the idea would be as if we, you know, if you make a whole wing, say, or something for the Boys and Girls Club, now you have another building. But that building that was given to the Boys and Girls Club, you know, it has a certain charter, it has a certain, something that it has to live by for the folks who gave it, gave it to the town, and so we felt it was the best use was to just do it this way for now. Now, if something happens in the future where there's another space that opens that makes a lot more sense, then we'd more than happy to entertain that as well. And I didn't think the Brooks House did too well for them either, so, yeah. Nobody seemed to want the Brooks House for that reason, I don't know, but.
My next question was, can you remind me what the two costs were when you did the renovation or the rebuild of the, just the Passios in the past committee? I just want to remember what the numbers were compared to this.
Twenty-three million and 30 million. Twenty-three point three, I believe, and 29.5.
The construction costs. I think the, if you added in soft costs and things, I think it got north of that.
Right. Once you add all.
I think we got an initial, I think the TC, the initial TCP was, I'm having to go back a long way here, might have even been under, slightly under 20, 18-something construction. Then we did the exercise where we did a comparative cost analysis on what it would cost if we just ripped that building down and built a new building to see if we, you know, if we're going to do a wholesale, fully code seismic compliant renovation of that building, would it make sense just to start from scratch? That was so high that then they went back and relooked at their assumptions that they made for the estimate that they had given us six months ago, and they accelerated that cost by like 30 more percent or something like that. So I think, I think those might have even been higher than that.
I thought it was like, if I remember, I thought it was like 30 and 40 million.
I thought it was like 30, and that's all in with like soft costs and everything.
I get it.
Yeah. Design costs, you know, furniture, fixtures, furniture, and equip, FFNE and all that stuff, so.
So, I mean, I've obviously been an advocate to have something done. I mean, I like this plan. I think it takes care of a lot of different buildings. I always worry about, you know, there's a half of the town that doesn't like when you take out a big bite of a big project. They want to see things done individually, and there's the other half of the town, if you do things individually, they want to see the whole thing. That's always my concern, that's always been the merry-go-round that we seem to go in. I want to see something done. I think this is as good a plan as any, and if I took one thing away from this, these are preliminary costs, right?
Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to, just wanted to be sure. No, I think the next step should be a roadmap. I think that is an excellent plan, and I think certainly funding is going to be needed, and I think that the committee should probably start thinking about what that funding needs to be, and it probably should appear in, you know, a special town meeting in the fall to get this underway, you know, and get this to the next steps, because we don't want to lose momentum.
Unless we want to allocate our funding, because I think we're going to need about $250,000 to get started.
Well, that's, that's, that's your board's prerogative.
To the town manager, do you have any comments or questions?
Comments? I thank the committee for all the hard work that they've put in, in this arduous project, process over the year, and I know it's been a long discussed topic of all the buildings, so not an easy one to tackle. I do have some questions, just as far as your discussions on different thoughts on the buildings. For the Ritter, parking was adding additional space to that building? Was it discussed how parking would be accommodated with additional end users?
Yeah, I think we were intending to capitalize on the recent demolition project that happened at 30th School Street and utilize that parking, which is in close proximity. The Village Center overlay district allows that, allows sort of remote parking in the zoning district, so that's our strategy for that. We won't be able to get a few more spaces as part of the, the site package when the addition was, is put in, but I think that there would certainly be more, more parking needed than is available at that site, on that site proper, so that we would anticipate using available park at School Street.
And for both the, so to go back to that, so you mean the lot that's being graded right now to make that a parking lot?
It was a portion of it. So I think the idea was the green space in the back, similar to what the, this board was looking at for a park, and really kind of looking at what this board was talking about with parking and how this board would do parking over there, was really built upon that happening. So parking was really relying upon that, that area, but not encroaching too much into the area, but some.
And Town Hall and the Ritter, with all the renovations that would need to take place and additional building space at the Ritter, I would assume that would trigger... I would assume that would trigger all the ADA requirements and a need for elevators in both buildings?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean.
That taken into consideration?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about, so the square foot costs that we pulled from the 545, or inclusive of elevators and ADA compliance and all that, all that thing, which is one of the reasons why we used it. Um, one of the other things we talked about is perhaps as recently as our last meeting, is that the, the added benefit of doing a modified renovation of this building and the Ritter building uh, would be to uh, make it so that we could have handicapped accessibility into the front door of the building. I mean, that's, that's like, we, we want to provide that, right? So I, I think that um, doing a uh, a renovation project would uh, require a, require that level of uh, of upgrade to the building. So that's, we anticipate that.
So an elevator in the front of the building?
Yeah, I know, I mean, how it actually would work, you know, that's what we'd need our professional, you know, professional, you know, architects to help us with that. But we envision doing a uh, a full renovation, which would be, you know, sort of uh, bringing the systems up to, up to um, up to modern day standards, uh, making sure the envelope is, is up to modern day standards, accessibility, uh, elevators, you know, the, the whole nine there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
I had a couple more. Sorry. Probably the most questions. Um, the square footage costs, what was, so there was an inflation factor figured in? What, on the base cost from?
I cannot remember what we did there.
Yeah, I think the base cost that we were going off of was 350 initially, and I think that we were also comparing to the fully renovated, you know, and we landed somewhere around 545. So we were, it was a bunch of analysis that we did to get there. We were all kind of working off of different math and numbers, and 545 uh, was high, much higher than what we were looking at um, for TC Passios.
That's all?
Any other questions?
No.
So before turning to the public for questions, I do want to ask Mr. Scullenbrini if he wouldn't mind coming forward and offering any commentary. Mr. Scullenbrini is a member of the APDC. Uh, we've incorporated him into the committee for constant involvement and advice. Um, and he's really been a valuable member, so uh, if you wouldn't mind.
Tony Scullenbrini, 5 Alley Road. Um, I think we've made, from an architectural preservation district perspective, we've made great strides in having the town look at um, these buildings, Town Hall, Ritter, uh, as a component that's going to be continually used in the future. When I first spoke before the, at the special time meeting in November last year, I think it was, I made the point that, you know, actually the year before, before that, is that you just can't walk away from these buildings, and the committee, through the hybrid uh, approach, has embraced, you know, renovating these buildings. And I can tell you that renovating both Ritter and Town Hall is very feasible, very possible. And I think, you know, even with issues like handicap accessibility, um, we're going to make this uh, building much more usable. And while there's going to be some expense associated with that, it's still going to be less expensive than building brand-new square footage to replace both Ritter and Town Hall. And, and one of the things I can tell you is that all the windows in Town Hall have already been replaced. So we're not, we're not going to talk about, we're not going to talk about windows as a contentious issue for, for Town Hall. And I'm so glad that that is the case. Um, so I think that we've made great strides as a community through this process to listen to history and how it can have an impact on what this town continues to look like at its center, at its village district, at its architectural preservation district. And I'm just thrilled with the outcome that we've reached with the hybrid. I want to make one, one other comment. Um, because every time you, you know, Tom, your comment about uh, doing little bits and pieces versus the big picture. And uh, I wish Matt Allison was here because I think he'd make this case even better than what I might make. And that is, the town needs a master plan. And, you know, it's been slow coming, and, you know, we're now reaching the point where I think they've selected a contractor that's going to do it. And I think that that master planning process can answer the questions about the community centerpiece. You know, you charged this committee to be the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, not the Lunenburg Community Center Committee. And I think that, you know, we can answer some of those questions about the broader uh, issues associated with TC Passios, and then, you know, the, the elephant that's still in the room yet, you know, Turkey Hill, you know, because the school, we know the school committee is, has interest in upgrading or, you know, building a new school for Turkey Hill. I think that the master planning process is the next step. So, you know, for, for us, you know, the charge that we had was to look at the Lunenburg Municipal Design Process. And I think the municipal building design process is quite nicely explained in the hybrid concept. So.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scullenbrini. All right, any member from the public, Rhonda, I know that you're going to come forward, so Rhonda. And if anyone else from the public has any questions, uh, please feel free to raise your hand or come forward.
Rhonda Lysio, 181 Reservoir Road. Um, the question I have is, the 10,000 square feet at the Ritter, which would be 6,000 existing square feet in the 4,000 square feet of addition, um, what is the breakdown between the school and the town office spaces in that building?
Yeah, so it's almost split. Um, so I think the, the concept, as we were discussing this, and we were, so what we did was we looked at kind of those space needs requests. I don't have the specific number for you, uh, but we were looking at those space needs requests, how much square footage was, was requested based on all of our analysis. And that total uh, came in as, at about 10,000. And we also, it was a little more than that, but we took out all, some of those like meeting rooms, because we had a lot of meeting rooms in the TCP design, and those were consolidated into this building instead. And so we kind of made up for that um, by using this building. I think the idea would be that Ritter building, as you walk into it now, that whole second floor would become school admin offices, so that we broken down into offices. Uh, the basement area would become more offices and then also the ACE program. And that's because one of the critical staff that runs ACE is also part of the admin team, and they have to be co-located with ACE. And then there was some discussion about what is now the planning office area would likely become um, some conference area and/or additional office space, or become like a bridge between the, the buildings. But I think that based on the building commissioner's input, we probably wouldn't be able to use it as a bridge. But I think that we were, we were thinking that initially, uh, but, you know, that's where we kind of landed. So we're really, really looking at it from a total square footage. And I think the next step, when we get funding, is really taking all those space needs, overlaying them into the, the floor plans.
I guess my, my question, my next question would be, okay, so the 4,000 square feet would mostly be town offices then?
Oh, exclusively.
Oh, okay. And none of the town will be running over into the school space?
So as far as school admin?
Right.
I think there's got to be a little bit of overlap, um, but minimal. So I think the idea is that the new building that would be constructed would be town offices, and just town offices.
Okay, well, that brings me to my, to a, just a, a suggestion. Did you ever consider, instead of doing the addition, which we know is more expensive, in the fact that we're going to invest in completely renovating the two buildings, why wouldn't we make one for the school and one for the town and convert this meeting space into office space?
I don't know if I understand fully your question, Rhonda.
If you say we convert this meeting space into office space and put all, either all the school or all the town uses into this building, and use the other 6,000 square feet for either the town or the school?
And I think, I think the answer is, we saw this room in particular as being a historic room. Um, and I know that we, I don't think at any point do we ever consider this not being a meeting room. Uh, even, even I know that as we were talking about like TC Passios, I think even then we were still kind of planning that this room would still be available in some capacity for, for meetings. Um, and I think it's just kind of sticking with those historic roots. I don't think we ever considered not using this space uh, for meeting. And then there's also, I, I, I think there's also, I wouldn't say, you know, none of us are structural engineers on the committee, but we know that there's some structural issues in this building. You know, if you go into the basement, I think the first row of pillars that support this front of the building are actually behind you. And so, you know, so all those, you know, so all of us sitting up here, which is, below us is the town clerk office, that the supports are behind you, and then the next ones are the wall of the building. I know that, so load, it was something that we knew was going to be a concern, uh, and we just, not having that engineering support on the team, uh, I know that we were cautious about more load onto this building.
Um, okay, I, and I just, I don't know, I feel like if we're going to go through the expense of renovating this entire building, I think that the meeting space idea kind of under utilizes the space for like my taste at, you know, $545 a square foot. Just a suggestion. Um, and the, and also, it would, it would mean you wouldn't have to do an addition to the Ritter.
Well, I think that that, that's kind of, we need more square footage. Uh, this room doesn't make up the, you know, this isn't a 4,000 square foot room, so, you know, we don't have that square footage. And I think one of the other things that was really appealing about Town Hall being used for meeting space is speaking with PAC, understanding where their costs come from, um, you know, that a big portion of it is cabling. And so by having it in this building, that it allows us to have all of our meeting rooms, you know, with, with, you know, if you think about the distance from wherever their control room would be here or in the basement, that it would be minimal on the cabling versus going across a building like TC Passios, going across, you know, a, a new Ritter Town Hall, that by consolidating that meeting, the cabling gets a lot shorter, which then has a huge negative, a huge positive impact on overall cost. And I know that that was something that we really considered, was where to put, you know, why the meeting space would be here, um, and, and why that was the most cost-effective answer. But Mr. Black?
So I, I just wanted to just to re, um, if we, no, no, please. Um, one of the other things was to think about, one of the reasons we were thinking about the, the meeting space thought here was that certain things have happened. So like, as an example, since the churches uh, sold their building, now there's the Boys and Girls Club, both need a place to stay, a place to, to have their meetings as well. There's been many other committees in this town, whether it's the Agriculture Committee, whether it's other committees that have always been looking for places to, to meet. So we're really trying to make this a, a really a space for the community, once again, for the community to use as much as possible. Um, hey, for all we know, is what the Boys and Girls Club now, being part of Milford, which has a great theater program, um, maybe this, now we have shows and, and plays here as well. So we're trying to use this for whatever we can, as much as we can.
Yeah, and that was also led to why we thought this room needed to get expanded, was by removing what's behind us, the Human Resource Office, Town Manager's Office, going back to those, going back to the wall, the original wall, that that gives us a much larger room for activities like what Mr. Black just stated.
Okay, um, I guess the last thing I had was, um, yeah, it's just an awful lot of money for community space when, I don't know, I feel like the real issue is getting our town and school employees into um, better working conditions. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. So I'll offer some commentary as well. I know I've added in questions, but as a, you know, I'll kind of take off my Municipal Building Design Committee hat and put back on the Select Board. You know, one thing that I really like um, about this process and getting to this point was I think we really incorporated a lot of the feedback that we heard from the community. Um, you know, one of the, one of the tough points was on the after-school program that is currently happening at TC Passios. And that was one of the tough points with the school committee. We, we pushed back very hard um, on that. Um, and it was, we, I think on our committee, we all recognize the importance of the after-school program, for sure. Um, and, and, you know, I'll also share that, you know, I, I also met with the school committee. Uh, I know I've mentioned this to this board previously, but I met with the school committee and, and I was, uh, it was a very good conversation, but one of my key points was Turkey Hill. Um, and, and really just kind of stating to them that, look, you know, the problem that we're having as a town is what to do with old schools, let's just be real. Um, your old primary school, TC Passios, 55,000 square feet, that, and, and I offered to the school committee an opinion, um, my own opinion, that if they continue to maintain Turkey Hill, uh, and, and not turn it over to the town when there, whatever happens in the future, but let's pretend that they're going to turn it over to the town in 10 years, they're going to build a brand-new school. The conversation that I had was, you know, you need to continue to invest in this building. Because what happens is, you take a building like TC Passios, when that gets turned over to the town, it's a building that has multiple needs. And it takes us how long to kind of identify those needs, respond to those needs, and if it goes the way of old primary, it's too slow to keep up with the building. And that Turkey Hill would be in the best position for the town if, if they decide to build a new school and have no more use for that, and they don't expand it. That continuing to make the upgrades to the building puts the town in a much better position. If we take possession of Turkey Hill, and it's already been maintained, it's already been renovated, and, and as we have this conversation about after-school program, need for more services, um, that, that building could become prime for a long-term community center. Um, and so I think that that option is still open. Um, and I, and I'm trusting that, you know, we will continue to support Turkey Hill, the school committee's request for renovations to that space, knowing that any dollar they spend there only benefits us in the long run, um, as we kind of, as we sort through that whole process. Um, so I'm just offering that as a comment, but one thing is also the after-school program, and I think part of the thought as well, there was a lot of pushback from the school department about children not being able to separate a space that they kind of have a little bit more relaxed time in versus a place that's, space that's more structured for learning. Uh, and there were some concerns there. I know our pushback was, hey, we looked at kind of the top districts in the state, and said, well, they're having their after-school programs in their schools, not affecting their grades and other numbers, so why can't Lunenburg do it? And of course, there's a, you know, the school said there's a lot of other factors that come into play. But I think part of the vision is that, you know, no matter what, uh, the town's going to have to invest some space into maintaining the after-school program, and hopefully we can do that in a way that also supports the Boys and Girls Club. And I really do believe that, that perhaps this project may not answer those questions, but I would hope that the Turkey Hill project could and would. Mr. Black?
So I'm going to, I'm going to take off my building reuse uh, hat and stick on my Green Community hat, and um, just say that the Green Community is looking forward to meeting with our new uh, facilities managers for both the school and the town. We are going to be looking for projects to do. I've heard wind of like AC projects at the schools and other projects. We need projects that this town brings to us, instead of us bringing projects to you. Um, that's been the charter of, of the, ever since Mr. Rhonda uh, decided to retire. That's basically been our charter, where the Green Committee has had to bring projects to the town, kicking and screaming. But the fact of the matter is, we're looking for you guys to bring projects to us. Let us help you get the funding, where I think we're over, well over, I think we're over 500K already. You know, half a million dollars for this town of free money. Um, we look forward to getting more from the state, and that's about it. Bring me some projects.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Do we have any final questions or comments from the board? All right, I want to thank Municipal, I want to thank all the members of the Municipal Building Design Committee uh, for being here this evening, for offering the commentary, Mr. Black, Mr. Roy. Um, I see you back there, Mr. Gray, and also Anthony, um, Tony, your son's Anthony, also Tony, uh, thank you as well. Mr. Rhonda?
No, 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 sorry, I was just sitting up.
All right, well, thank you all, and uh, we will certainly be in touch, Mr. Roy. Are you just grabbing your phone? All right.
We'd love to keep.
Thank you.
We'd love to have you guys have an audience, but, uh.
All right, so next on our agenda, I'm actually going to flip way down to our old business here. So for old business, we have tax investigation update. So for tonight, I've asked Mr. Kramer to come meet with us tonight. So uh, just as a brief recap, uh, the Select Board, early on, identified funding uh, to be able to support the Board of Assessors in being able to um, provide reviews of all the properties that requested abatements. Uh, this board, um, hired, and with the town manager, we hired Mr. Kramer's organization. And we do know that, that Mr. Kramer did present to the Board of Assessors on kind of uh, his update where he was at with his report. I know we've all had the time to look at the report, it's also in our Google Drive for this evening. I've asked Mr. Kramer to come with us this evening, um, just as this board is, is working on its investigation. Certainly, uh, we're incorporating, we will be incorporating Mr. Kramer's report into that. Kramer's report into that, um, into their investigative report. But I just wanna turn over to Mr. Kramer, if the booth wouldn't mind pinning him on the screen for us. Um, I wanna turn to Mr. Kramer just to kinda give a brief overview this evening of, um, and I want, I'm gonna ask him to be as candid and, uh, as possible, and I'd like for you just to review what your process was like working with the town. I know that you and I had several conversations, and, and what that was like communicating with me, with the Town Manager, also the process that you undertook, and kinda what your key takeaways, uh, in the process were. So I know you're still on mute, Mr. Kramer, so if we can go ahead and get you off mute. But I wanna thank you, Mr. Kramer, for being here, and I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Nate?
Sorry, I tried to unmute him.
All right, so it looks like we still need to unmute here.
There you go.
And can the booth pin Mr. Kramer?
So thank you for having me, um, uh, working with the Town Manager, just, you know, on both sides, both in Town Hall and with all taxpayers other than that, but, um, it was great. I mean, I remember the little guy, I wanted to, just, just wanted everything to be right, I wanted it to be fair, you know, like everybody, yeah, the market was crazy, but after a couple of years, we know, we know that that, the value went up, but, um, uh, uh, they were, you know, I made pretty many questions about the amount that was done, so we did our own sales analysis, we, uh, inspected all the former properties, I'm not even sure what that number is yet, we're still monitoring the data from those inspections. Um, uh, we also interviewed, uh, most of the brokers involved with the sales over the past three years on waterfront properties, so for twenty-twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, just to, just to get more information on sales themselves to see if they weren't in that, um, arms-length sale or not. Um, and in doing that, we thought out that, you know, some of the sales that were originally disqualified probably shouldn't have been, and then some of the sales that, uh, were qualified probably should have been disqualified, and, and we came up with our own, um, you know, a new sales analysis that produced numbers that were just all over. Um, so, uh, once we started, you know, doing the inspections, we realized, okay, well, we're seeing a pattern here, some of these sales that are really low, the, hey, the assessments of sales rates are really low, they tend to be nice houses with nice waterfronts, where the ASRs that have, um, that are, you know, like, sorry, my eyes is gonna kill, please, my voice is a little worse, um, but the ASRs that are in the, um, you know, high seventies to the nineties, they're probably the more, the more typical houses on the lake. So, um, in doing that, we figured out that, all right, um, uh, I believe it was two-thirds of the sales that, that occurred, um, during the timeframe of the sales analysis were very inappropriate, uh, and that's, that's how the adjustment formed here. Um, so, um, and, and it's important to know that, coming in and not even, I think it was, I'm not even sure how many years ago it was, um, but the land values on all three of the lakes have been the same price per square foot and the same land acre for, for years. So this, this market that we've seen in the past couple of years really, um, got to the point where it's, I don't think we would've been able to decide for, okay, well, this makes this lot because this lot is nicer, it's gonna sell them for more than another lot. It was this market, crazy, um, all of a sudden was going on with COVID, a very low interest rate, um, it really fit out a whole new step in where it showed we should have different pricing for some of these properties, um, which, which, uh, would be good, average, or below. Um, and that's what we came up with. Um, so, um, so if we were to bring the land values, and we're already talking about land values here, so that's important to note, so, uh, what we, what we came up with, is if we brought the land values back to the twenty-two va, twenty-twenty-two va, just the twenty-two values, um, we found that the average waterfront lot, or average waterfront land, land-only, not so, probably should've gone up seventeen percent, um, over the, whatever was, ballpark of a hundred percent is what everybody wants. Uh, the below-average land, we weren't able to really come up with an adjustment on that because there had only been one of those sales in the past three years, that was arm's length. Um, and then for the people that have really nice waterfronts, and in the report, um, there's definitions of how the, the criteria that we used to determine what was average, what was good, what was below average, um, with the good waterfront, um, we were seeing that it should've gone up, the land only should've gone up fifty-five percent. So, at the, um, a, after the, the land adjustments were applied, that would've been, for the average waterfront, if you had seventeen percent on the land only, it would've been an overall adjustment of eleven percent. Um, and then for the good waterfront, fifty-five percent land adjustment would've been an overall adjustment of thirty-five percent, which, uh, we feel is much more in line with what the market was actually doing, um, and, um, uh, we feel really good about the comments, and I, I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm told that the Board of Assessors did vote that this, um, and, and that's where we are. In this report, we also noted some other, um, we had some other recommendations, there were fire roads, um, uh, rank of way, uh, topography, seasonal adjustment, seasonal progress, um, Little Hickory Lake is actually in index one, uh, but it probably shouldn't be, uh, because it had no access to Hickory Hill. Um, some roads probably can do the traffic adjustment, um, uh, town on the road has those houses that are across from the lake, and they don't, and, and they have even lots across the street that are actually on the lake, that should probably look at. Uh, and these are, we didn't make any specific recommendations on these because, um, these are things that just should be watched moving forward. Uh, and, that's about it again, I mean, everybody, uh, on both sides, everybody that we've dealt with, in, in, in terms of taxpayers and in terms of, uh, working with the town, everybody was, had it great. Uh, I said to several of those people that if the town was, uh, if, if your taxes were based on how nice you were, how many broke. Uh, but that's it, I mean, do you have any more, give me questions?
So Nate, um, that's really good to hear, uh, you know, certainly, you, you and your team went around and, and you guys had the chance to look at every single property. Um, you know, the work that you did was, was, I, I'm summarizing what you just said, I know your audio on our end is a little muffled, so I'm just gonna summarize a bit of what you just stated, um, not too much here, but a little bit. So a, as you went around and you were looking at the properties inside index one, what you just indicated was that you, you reached out to, um, the brokers, the real estate agents who helped sell the homes, that you guys were able to identify, um, that some of the sales that were included as being, uh, qualified were not in fact qualified, that they were not, um, arm's-length sales. And in your process of review, that you were able to identify very clearly, um, you know, waterfront average, um, waterfront minus, in, in a way of being, you know, those properties that are fifty-six steps to get to the water, people who have rock and, and ledge, and then kinda the waterfront good, uh, the people who have, uh, a lot of waterfront or beaches, you know, easy access from their property. And, and as you looked at this overlay, that what you kind of came up with was a, was a change in the table, in saying, hey, with inside index one, you know, your recommendation would be for the land use, for, um, the average properties to go up by about seventeen percent, I believe I heard you say, on the land side over fiscal year twenty-two, um, which would equate to about an eleven percent increase. And then you said on the, uh, properties that were, you know, waterfront plus or good, that those would go up about fifty-something percent on the land side over fiscal year twenty-two, which would have a net impact of about a thirty-five percent increase, um, and that there weren't a lot of sales, uh, for waterfront minus. You said that there was one in the last three-year arm-length sales, and so you didn't really have a strong recommendation there. Uh, but that you were able to pretty clearly see, looking at, uh, a data range that went into two thousand and, um, went into two thousand and twenty-six months, and then went into two thousand and twenty-two, uh, six months. So not just looking at that one year, but going two years, six months in each year, uh, to kinda give you a better range of what the data would look like. Is that fair capture of what you just stated?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, one thing that I would add, because there has been some confusion on this, these increases are not on top of what we've already got. This is bringing it back to the fiscal twenty-two values, and the increases are going to the land only, not, the, the building values are staying where they are, but what we're talking about is bringing it back, so if, if there was no change at all to the land, we're saying, uh, what was it, seventeen and fifty-five percent instead of, um, I think it was around a hundred percent across the board for everybody, so it's not, that change is not over and above that hundred percent. We're bringing it back to it, if there was no change at all in doing the, if, um, those percent change.
All right, and, and that analysis of yours, and, and I know that you, you did provide the resumes for your team, all very experienced, uh, people who are working as assessors in the Commonwealth. I think the cumulative years amongst your team was something outrageous, outrageous in the good sense of like, I think it was like sixty, seventy years or so or more. Um, and so really a lot of experience. So I wanna ask you, um, you know, what was it like working, and, and again, I know you've been paid, so I want you to be really frank with us, um, but what, what was it like working with the Town Manager, working with, uh, you know, you and I had several conversations as well, and just give us some honest commentary on what that process was like, things you think we could've done differently on our end, if anything?
I, I, everyone had been great, so I didn't really deal with a Board of Assessors at all. Uh, I dealt directly with, uh, yourself, Heather, and you, and...
He froze. Is he frozen?
He is. All right, Nate, you are frozen on our side, let me just shoot him a quick message to tell him that.
Uh, CJ, uh, and Sheila in the office, um, I can hear you.
You were frozen for a minute, but you're back.
My bad.
Yes.
I never, I could hear it, I couldn't hear you say, I don't know why, it's that my connection is unstable, so I don't know if that's my side or your side.
Yep.
Um, where did I get cut off?
You said you had communications, you said you didn't really, you did speak with me and Heather, you didn't really speak with the Board of Assessors, and then you got cut off there.
Well, he said CJ.
So CJ and Sheila.
Except for CJ and Sheila.
And, and some dealing with Sheila, um, you know, just organizing all the record cards and, and, and getting them to us, um, uh, I mean, I had, I had no, no complaints on either side, both, both either with the people I dealt with in the town, or, um, you know, in terms of Town Government, or, um, taxpayers and stuff, I mean, understandably, there were a lot of upset people, um, but, um, at the end of the day, they, everybody was great to us.
Excellent. And, um, I wanna turn to the, turn, turn to the board just for questions that the board may have on, um, I know we all have the report, but on the process that Nate and his team undertook, uh, any questions at all?
No, I just wanted to clarify that Nate said that the Board of Assessors voted to use this chart for the abatements, is that correct? Or no?
That's what I...
They did, they did, they did say today, when asked whether they were going to adopt the recommendations of the report, the Chair of the Board of Assessors said yes.
Okay, so what happens to the properties they already did the abatements for?
I don't think they've started with the waterfront abatements yet.
Okay, okay.
That is correct. They've, the, the one they've already handled are non-lakefront.
Non-lakefront, okay.
Properties. And they voted two meetings ago to, uh, use that methodology.
Okay.
In Nate's report.
Okay.
Or MFS's report.
All right. Mr. Fringer?
I just wanna thank you for what you've done. I don't have any further, any questions at this time, I've been marinating in this for a while, so.
So he's ready for the grill. Uh, I will say also, thank you to you and your team, uh, thank you for the commentary, the free editorial, and working with the townspeople. I obviously think the world of the townspeople, and they are a great, uh, set of people, and it's a great town to work in, uh, even under these conditions. So, um, I do have one question, is, uh, on the rating system of, uh, good, average, and below average, was, although it's not fully in the report, you give an example of the ones that you used in the sales, but did you do a classification for everybody who has an abatement before the Board of Assessors? Did you rate all of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
So while we were at the property, we were actually writing it down on the record card, um, and as I'm entering the data, I also am entering the data, I'm not entering any changes that we found, um, building itself during the inspection, we are entering those changes into the town's fiscal twenty-four database, but what was, the other thing we're doing is we have a spreadsheet that we're entering into simultaneously with what we felt the waterfront rating was, average, good or below average. And as we ship, so I shipped, I brought up about a hundred and eighty, uh, to the office today, and also emailed a spreadsheet with those same hundred and eighty and what the waterfront ratings were, uh, so they can then apply that new land evaluation to those, to those properties and start processing and evaluation.
And at what point do you feel the remainder will be sent to them?
Um, I'm looking at the stack. Um, it would be, I mean, it would get sent to you.
Okay.
And I think they'll get through, I sent them a hundred and eighty, I don't know what they got to today, but I would imagine that they're gonna need all of that to, uh, to get through whatever it is today.
Yeah, I don't know, well, I don't think they were hearing abatements until starting next week, I believe, they said, is that correct?
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so they didn't even start yet. Um, well, I appreciate all the hard work and everything, and I know there are people that are almost, I say almost 'cause the abatement process isn't done, may start seeing the light at the end of the tunnel and may breathe the sigh of relief, but we will wait to see if your recommendations are indeed followed by the Board of Assessors. And I wanna thank you for, and your team, for all your work and efforts in this.
Well, thank you.
So Nate, in your report, you know, one of the key questions that this board has been challenged to try to answer, uh, and this, the whole purpose of the, uh, investigation, is to understand how this happened in the first place. And, and, you know, you're, you really did go kind of above and beyond, uh, and, uh, to try to help us answer that question. You know, one of the, one of the comments that you made to me, uh, in a conversation was that you, you thought that the housing, the data related to homes was incredibly accurate, um, more accurate than what you normally would experience in most communities. And so you thought that we had some pretty good records as related to residents' homes, um, but then you had, you know, concerns about land. But would you mind just taking a few minutes and speaking to, based on your, you know, knowledge, training, and experience, you know, how it is that the town found itself initially, um, in a position where we did not come to the recommendations that you are now providing?
So like I said, uh, about two-thirds of the sales that happened in the nine-rings, that were the, you know, the, the pen幅 relief values, uh, occurred, um, were very inappropriate, not representative of most of the properties on the lake, um, and all of the waterfront properties are, they are in the same site with very few other adjustments. So whether you were deep in a cove and, um, you know, couldn't even get your cattle to your land, uh, in the middle of the summer if you wanted to, or whether you had a nice flat lawn with three dogs and a beach, all that land was there. Um, so when the two-thirds of the sales occurred of, of those very niche properties and having them be priced the same way just on the land, it looked at this, and I got into this, I could see how this adjustment would've been made, especially if, um, you know, you would go to the town, um, in going, in, in also a two-person office, which you never have all the time to do what you need to do in a two-person office, um, and, um, quite frankly, having a board that probably, uh, is just, you know, whether, and I wrote about this in my report, one is brand new, um, one, I think, hasn't taken the required, I'm thinking of the... um, one, I think, hasn't taken the required, I think, of the BOR one-on-one, which is a requirement to sign off on thing. Uh, but it's just, it's, in my opinion, and I hate to say this, but it's right now, and I think, I think it, it will get better, but right now, when this is referred to that very report. Um, so you had a new assessor who was very serious, uh, in a, in a board that really probably just signed what was put in front of them, uh, because I'm guessing that's how one of them passed. Uh, uh, so, and then, and then in doing that, those, those tests all lined up. So, um, you know, we heard all the, you know, the BOR approved it. It wasn't a revaluation here, it was, they just looked at the stats, and they don't, they're not digging deep like they were for fiscal twenty-four with the revalue. So it fit, um, even though it wasn't necessarily right or equitable, it fit. And that's all they're looking at, uh, in this, you know, in the interim years when it's not a revaluation.
All right. That seems pretty clear. Um, so thank you for that, Nate, and I know that in your report, it's, it's, you know, you go into a lot more detail related to, you know, the fact that you were able to back into these numbers and kind of see how they fit into, um, you know, the model that was used, and then, you know, kind of what those corrections need to be going forward. And I'm sure that as this board, you know, discusses this over the next couple of weeks, uh, I anticipate that we all are very much so aware of things that need to be better going forward. Um, and, and I'm certainly trusting that we're going, you know, take some of the feedback you've given us, and on our side also, our own knowledge, and, and really provide a, a path ahead that identify, or I wouldn't say identify the path ahead, but that goes to the, you know, Board of Assessors who's empowered to make adjustments with recommendations from us on, on how they can do that going forward. Uh, because I think we all see opportunities, uh, for improvement, uh, including what even happened, uh, at the meeting today. Thank you, Nate, and I want to just turn to any member of the public for any comments or questions related to this work, and I do see...
If I may comment?
Of course.
I just want to, to anybody who's watching this either live on Zoom or in person, or watching the recording, I would encourage you, if you want to get Nate's full report, which he clearly, he, he summarized his findings here for the brevity of the, of the, the meeting, but read the report. It's online, it's very clear. He clearly lays out all of his findings, what he found out, why, and explains things very well, and, uh, you know, it's really good for everybody to know, because one of the things this has brought up is that most people don't have any idea before this year how their taxes are performed, how they get there, how the valuations are done. This is the year to know this, going forward forever. Every property owner should know how this works and what to look for in the future, and that goes not only for the residents, but also the people who are going to serve on the BOA and assessors, et cetera. So it really is a very, very thorough read.
They were about five hundred members for it.
All right, so just any questions, comments from the public? I see we have Mr. McDonald with his hand up. Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Sorry, do that again.
Yeah, Donald, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, guys. Uh, Nate, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, I know you proved a great job, and we really appreciate it, and your, and the time you worked. So Nate, thank you.
Thank you.
My concern that I have, Mr. Chair, is with the investigation, uh, from, from the mailing of those who say that we are, uh, underfunded and at the time were supporting us, uh, people knew that this was incorrect. I hope that the investigation that is continuing will find out there's a lot of flaws in that, and it caused a lot of anxiety to residents of Lunenburg. And for that, I am sad to say, I think the other thing is, we have to look at, is we talked about today on the Board of Assessors, and I want to thank Lou and Mr. Alonso for being there. I have no clue where these guys are coming from. Uh, and all they're going to do is follow Nate's recommendations, and, and that was the fun this afternoon. So that has been disappointing here, but this has been going on for five months, and we requested to you, Mr. Chair, and to the committees of the Board of Select and the Board of Assessors, a letter to all the residents in town who have to file a, uh, an escrow because their taxes went up five, six hundred dollars a month. I mean, this, this isn't funny anymore, Mr. Chair, and, and the town is really, or I shouldn't say, at least a four hundred and forty, uh, lakefront properties, and really at, it, it's to a point where it's, it's been to a joke. And for this to happen is sad, but I thank God for Nate for coming in and finding the problem. So with that, Mr. Chair, I want to say good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Do we have any other comments or questions from any other member of the public? Any comments from the board? Uh, thank you, Mr. Kramer, again. Want to thank you and your team. Uh, I know that, you know, we had to work with you on that RFP and, and, um, you know, really appreciate you for responding and reaching out. Um, and I, you know, I know that on, on this side, it was a lot of work getting that out the door, and then trying to make sure that we had, uh, something that you could bid on. Um, and so again, thank you for that. Uh, you know, the interview with you went exceptionally well. Um, and again, I just want to thank you for coming forward. The work you and your team did, uh, it really has been outstanding, and I, I want to thank my colleagues as well, uh, for, you know, responding to the call, um, that, uh, the need that we've heard from our community, uh, rising to the occasion and being able to, you know, bring on personnel as qualified as Mr. Kramer and his team to help get us to a, a further point. You know, I think it's through the work of this board that we were able to have some analysis to compare what was done, uh, and, and try to provide the Board of Assessors with clearer guidance on, on the way forward. So, you know, I, it, it really has been a group effort, uh, on all the people who've come forward to us to express the concern, on this board's willingness to respond, and then really just the stellar personnel, Nate, that you've had, personnel that you've had and have on your team. Uh, so, you know, I know I'm just a chair, but I do want to say on behalf of the town of Lunenburg, that we want to really thank you for the work you've done for our residents, uh, and for us. So thank you, Nate.
Thank you. We, we, like I said, we really enjoy working for the town, and, um, we're also very happy it's, uh, coming to an end for everybody.
Yep. All right. Thank you again for this evening, uh, and, uh, hope you enjoy the rest of your night. I'm sure you will get your final bill, and we'll try to get that turned around pretty soon. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Okay. So we're going to go back up. Um, I know it is about eight forty. I want to make sure I don't have anyone else on standby for our agenda tonight. I don't. Okay, we're going to go to what most people say, or some people say is the best part of our meeting, uh, the Town Managers Report. This is usually when I step away as well.
So it must not be the best.
Oh, it do?
She was.
No, she's little. Okay, so, yep, I don't think she was. Okay. To the Town Managers Report.
Give me a second to pull it up.
While you do that, why don't we do our water commitment? All right, so we're going to do our fiscal year two, fiscal year, oh, you already have that. All right, nevermind.
Go ahead.
We're going to do our fiscal year two thousand twenty-three fourth quarter water commitments, the amount of ten thousand sixty-six dollars. Uh, I think we typically vote on this one. Um, so this is our commitment. Again, the water, even though Lunenburg has a water district, that is a separate municipality within our town, and, uh, we have a water department. Our water department is pretty small. Uh, it's only a couple of people, and it's administered by the Select Board with the support of the Town Manager and everyone else. Uh, we just sign off on the bills. So this is a water commitment, again, for ten thousand sixty-six dollars and eleven cents. Um, do we need...
Just for clarification, there's no staff assigned in our water department, okay?
There's no people.
I just want to make sure that's clear to everyone.
We, we just bill.
Yes.
All right, do we need to make a motion to commit this? I don't recall.
Yes.
Tom, do you recall? We have to make a motion to commit, um, of the water commitment.
I can't hurt.
All right.
I would make a motion that we commit the water, uh, the, the fourth quarter water commitment in the amount of ten thousand sixty-six dollars and eleven cents.
Second. All right. Uh, any additional discussion? If somebody is in your favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. All right, ayes have it. Okay, I'm going to sign this and then pass it down, and the Town Manager will start.
Signature.
Um, there's two different forms.
Oh, okay, but there's only one on the one.
Yes, just one per.
It's a multi-page was with the tags everywhere that I...
So to the Town Manager, thank you for the Town Managers Report.
I'll start with the Boarding Committee and Commission Vacancies. There's one vacancy on the Finance Committee, one associate vacancy on the Green Communities Committee, one member-at-large vacancy on the Open Space Committee, one vacancy on the Personnel Committee, and one associate vacancy on the ZBA. Anyone interested in any of these positions can find the volunteer application forms on the town website, complete them, and return them to the Select Board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at nine seven eight, five eight two, four one three zero, extension one four four. For employment opportunities for the town, there are the following openings: Administrative Assistant for Conservation, which is ten hours a week; Administrative Assistant for the Planning Board, which is thirty-six hours a week; Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager, which is twenty-four hours a week; Assistant Town Accountant, thirty-two hours a week; Facility Superintendent, which is forty hours a week; Finance Director, which is forty hours a week, which is a contractual position; Police Officer, which is a forty-hour-a-week position; Veteran Service Agent, and those hours vary; and Videographer, which is approximately, uh, varies, but is ten to ten, two to ten hours a week. And information on these job postings can be found on the town website as well, under Employment. For updates on Invitation for Bids and Requests for Proposals, bids for the Guard Rail Repairs IFB are due on May thirty-first, the bids for the LED Streetlight Conversion Project will be due on June seventh, bids for the Page Street Culvert Construction IFB are due on June seventh as well. Monarchet Regional Transit Authority Rural Transportation Grant, which they're calling MART Connect. Monarchet Regional Transit Authority received a rural transportation grant from Mass Development that will provide affordable subsidized rides from a vetted group of taxi and delivery vendors for the towns of Lancaster, Lunenburg, and Sterling. Today, the Superintendent, the Land Use Director, the Council on Aging Director, and I met with officials from MART to review program details and how it could be marketed to various groups of people who would be in need of this service and our means of outreach. The program is expected to launch on July first and will be available to all residents. The maximum ride distance will be twenty miles, and fares will be based on mileage. So ten miles or less will be three dollars per ride, eleven to fifteen miles will be four dollars a ride, and sixteen to twenty miles will be five dollars a ride. Rides will be, need to be booked one day in advance, unless it's an emergency, and will operate from five thirty AM till ten PM, seven days a week. Within the next couple of weeks, MART will be providing us additional materials, or materials to advertise the program and all the details and how to sign up.
Excellent. I need to follow up with you. Um, Mass Development has another fifty thousand dollars for the town of Lunenburg. Um, we just have to, it's, it's got to get approved, but we just have to complete something before the first of June. But I'll follow it with you offline.
Are you talking about the one I'm already planning on applying for? The real estate technical assistance?
Yes.
That's the one I, um, have been keeping the board updated on the, I submitted a letter of expression, which I said I was going to apply for that.
Yep, you'll get it.
It's on my list to do just... Safe passage of bicyclist signage from Mass DOT related to an act to reduce fatalities. An act to reduce fatalities was signed into law in December two thousand twenty-two that stipulates when a motor vehicle is passing a vulnerable user, the operator of the motor vehicle shall pass at a safe distance of not less than four feet and at a reasonable and proper speed. As part of this new requirement, Massachusetts Department of Transportation is responsible providing the signage to towns for the towns to install on public ways that will notify operators of motor vehicles of the requirements for passing a vulnerable user from a safe distance as required by this law. Mass DOT has also provided guidance to public works on the location and installation of the signs. While the distance applies to passing all vulnerable road users, the sign created by Mass DOT pictures bicyclists, which are likely to be the most common vulnerable road user that a motor vehicle operator will encounter. As a reminder, this new law applies to all roadways regardless of whether the safe bicycle passing signage is posted. The sign is to serve as a reminder to drivers of the rules of the road. The DPW Director will be identifying how many signs we will be requesting and the locations. This information will then be submitted to Mass DOT. Any questions?
No.
Update on nine twenty-five Mass Ave. The EPA provided an update this week that a contract, uh, that the contractor, yeah, contractor that was hired by the EPA will be on-site tomorrow to do some groundwater sampling, and the work on the canopy structure and the underground tanks will start next week. If there are any changes to the schedule, I'll update the board. And I took this picture today to give you just an image, so down the road, you'll see the after picture.
The greenery underneath the canopy is really...
Yes.
I think it's something that other...
I know, it might eventually lift it up.
Yeah, they, they should do that.
Just thinking that.
Update on Thirty School Street. A hazardous materials abatement and demolition of the old primary school, also known as Thirty School Street, will be substantially complete by the end of this week. The, the contractors are doing final grading of the site this week. Um, it will be loamed and hydro-seated after the completion of the loan placement, and I took a picture as well of, that was taken today, the progress.
Nice. Excellent. Thank you, as always, to the Town Manager, uh, for that report. All right. We don't have any minutes tonight, um, and then our warrants, we do have old business here, uh, coming up, so we do have more discussion, but we're just doing current first. Uh, we don't have any minutes, we don't have any warrants, those were signed today, and does the board have any action items with the Town Manager?
I, I do have a question, and I don't know if the Town Manager knows about it. It's not, again, not her purview, and unfortunately, it's also about the assessors. Uh, social media posted, several people posted, I know that there's a ten-year review, so we've hired a company to do assessments of properties. Uh, I was visited on my property like two, two weeks ago or so, but people were posting that without permission, people were, some, some of the assessors were actually in people's backyards, peering in windows, measuring patios and decks without the owner's permission. Is, is the town aware of this?
I'm aware of the cyclical inspections.
Okay.
That are being done. Um, I was aware of one instance that they were going to be looking into. There was a, a complaint and, um, an incident.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to know because it sounded, I mean, one, you could say, ah, but there were like two others, uh, and they seemed to, you know, involve the same person each time, and they were pretty egregious. So.
All right. Any other action items this evening? All right, I see Lou flipping for a committee report, so you want to start, Lou?
Uh, yes. Well, I'll do the easy one first. Uh, this is prospective. Economic Development Committee will meet Thursday, six PM, if there's a, a quorum. That, that'll be at Ritter. Uh, today, I attended the Council on Aging Meeting. Um, I gave a senior tax relief update, sort of what the next stages are going to be, what happens now that the warrant article passed at town meeting, that, uh, the Town Manager has been in touch with the, uh, our legislative delegation, and sort of now that's going to take its course. Uh, there was discussion of the three-hundredth anniversary committee, uh, that's brought up as an agenda item every time at the Council on Aging. Mr. Lincoln said that, uh, they're going to get a group to, they group together, start brainstorming how to get every single citizen involved in the three-hundredth celebration, uh, and every single department. Um, the annual meeting for the Council on Aging is on Ju- uh, June thirteenth, and if my wife is listening, I signed up for you to, uh, cook chocolate chip cookies. So, uh... The, uh...
Wait, what does that mean, the annual meeting?
It's just that it's the end of your meeting, so there'll be like a little, you know, people bring things.
Is anybody is allowed to go, or just the council?
Um, well, I mean, I, I don't know, I, those meetings may be open. Um, well, I mean, I, I don't know, those meetings may be open in general anyway, are they? Or, or. The, the Council on Aging meetings, I mean, they're public meetings, I think, but.
They're definitely public meetings.
Yeah, so.
Well, we're hoping that they're public meetings, yeah.
Yeah. So with regard, uh, so there's a fundraiser, and I hope I don't blow this, but, uh, there's a joint fundraiser, uh, jointly sponsored by the Eagle House Supporters and the Lunenburg Skate Park Project. And basically, it's a calendar. If you buy the calendar, uh, you are assigned a number and each day during the month of June, you have an opportunity to win. So even if you win, say, on the third of June, you're not taken out of the loop. You could win again. Uh, and there are various prizes, a prize for each day of the month. Uh, the calendar is twenty dollars and it will benefit Eagle House Supporters and Lunenburg Skate Park Project. You can obtain this, uh, uh, calendar, raffle calendar essentially, on any of four sites. Lunenburg Adult Activities Center Facebook page. You can scan the QR code there. The Eagle House Supporters Facebook page. Uh, the Lunenburg Ledger, I believe, will have it or has already had a way to scan it in there. I don't know if they had it this past week, but. And also, the Lunenburg Skate Park Project Facebook page. So those are various avenues through which you can obtain this. That's all I have. I have no report.
All right, I think we met at the very beginning for my report. Minnesota Building Design, all right. And then we did hear the communication from the, uh, from the school committee as well. All right, old business. So we did discuss with Nate, um, discussed two forty-three Summer Street request. So I just added this back to the agenda. And just that way, we can kinda have a discussion briefly on what is next. So where the resident left off with, with the request, I think, um, just to kinda rephrase and kinda how that conversation went, we were all here. Um, it seemed as if we were split on, I think we were all in agreement that the town's not gonna pay for paving it. Uh, I think that seemed to be the general sentiment of the board. Um, and I think we were a little split on whether or not we wanted to grant, uh, permission. Uh, so I just wanted to bring this up, uh, just to see kinda what the next steps were, if we're in a position to take a vote to approve or deny, uh, to do so, uh, or kind of identify those next steps. Two forty-three Summer Street. So what are your, what are our thoughts? So again, the request was to pave that area in front of their house.
I, I don't support that.
Okay.
Not because I'm not sensitive. I don't support it for other reasons, because we have a town history of, of encroachment on town property and taking things off of town property that other people have put on, such as driveways.
Okay.
Okay, you're absolutely right as far as I, you're certainly characterizing my take accurately in that absolutely no support for paying for it. I'm open to potential persuasion on the idea of granting some kind of permission, but only because it involves, uh, you know, a person with a disability and, and, you know, a tightly, uh, uh, termed license of some kind. And, you know, I would never see doing this outside of, it's only because it involves a disabled person that I would even entertain the discussion. So I, I, I'm open to that discussion if, if there are others that would like to push that case.
I will push that case, but Mr., you want me to do it now or Mr. Alonso?
Feel free. I, I would say, I mean, since we're going down the line, I will say that, uh, yeah, the thought of pay, paying any portion of it didn't, I was never going to agree to. And I think that while I am, like, Ms. Roca said, being sensitive to this situation, uh, the town is not, you know, is not, it's not a good idea for us to set precedent of this kind to allow to be paved any part of, or sell back or license back town-owned property for an individual homeowner of any type. The fact that, that we're talking about somebody with a disability does not change that for me. Uh, I think that I did state that I think if, if the land was left in a, in a place that was unlevel and unstable for somebody with a disability, I think the town has a responsibility and probably a liability to set the grading even with the sidewalks that were put in. But I think that there's ample driveway access and that that walkway could be made, uh, navigable without any other special licensing required by the town. So I would not be in support of any kind of licensing or sale or anything easement of that nature, no.
Okay. So where I'm at is I, I think it may be helpful tonight for us to make a motion, even if the motion is to deny. I, I think a majority of us hopefully can come to some agreement, one way or the other. Um, you know, I, I, where I'm at is I think that the hardship, uh, the hardship we're here was created by the town. Um, in the sense of, you know, looking at how this was funded. It was funded utilizing, um, a state program, state money. And the purpose of the renovation was multifold. Um, part of it was to, you know, improve the look of the street, for sure. Summer Street was a really wide road, um, and to improve the look of the road. But the real point of why the state was giving money behind this had to do with what that renovation entailed. Is that, you know, the idea is, is a roadway that allows people from all socioeconomic backgrounds to traverse. That's the rationale behind the sidewalks, having a bike lane, uh, and then also having, you know, the roadway that allows people who, you know, don't have cars to be able to travel on, on that corridor, um, you know, walking, biking. And, and in that process, as I understand it, that, uh, the develop, not the developers, but the personnel and the planning portion of it, the engineers did go door-to-door to figure out how they could best accommodate every single owner. And they really did do that. And that is how like two forty-three Summer Street ended up with, um, two sidewalks. One going to their backyard, one coming to the front yard, 'cause it was a previous owner at that time. Uh, it was kinda how the town figured out how to give everyone more area to park behind their garage, garages. Most of those homes along Summer Street have garages or designated parking areas. And so it seemed as though the intent was to ensure that everyone could, could comfortably park about four cars on their property. Two forty Summer, two forty-three Summer Street in particular also has another area where they park RVs and, and so there's even more, more land, uh, area for parking. So it was a real concerted effort to try to accommodate, um, every owner on that street. And in the end, everyone ended up getting, most of the single-family homes got about fifteen feet or so of, of lawn. So where I'm kind of in this is, you know, the town doesn't maintain any of that lawn. And we've given it to them, we want it to be pretty, but we certainly are trusting that the owners would do it themselves. And then one of the things that, that I did after our last meeting was, you know, I'd been in my house quite a while. Um, and so I came home and I closed my eyes and I tried to get to the front door. And I'm gonna tell you, I've made this walk, you know, tens of thousands of times, and I just couldn't do it. And why, obviously, I did it, but I mean, it was very challenging. Um, and I'm not trained in how to use tools, but I just had my eyes closed and said, I make this walk all the time. Let me just do it tonight, and I couldn't do it. And, and, and I understand that in this case, it's an individual who, who wasn't born blind, but someone who became blind. And so it's an adjustment. You know, my, I'm in the mindset of, I think that, I, I don't, you know, it was, it was challenging working with the owners, uh, of the home to fully understand why there wasn't a more, uh, why a sidewalk wouldn't work. Um, why they couldn't just hug the wall closest to their property where there used to be a sidewalk and why that wouldn't just be a viable answer of just, you know, take a sidewalk, connect it and just hug it and just bring it right to your parking area, it can bring you right to the car. Um, and, and there's ambiguity right now over, uh, exactly the point that the property start, that the property lines are at. Do they own a foot beyond their stairs? Do they own, you know, two feet beyond their stairs? I think we know for sure it's not three feet, that they don't own three feet beyond their stairs. So my opinion is if the homeowner wanted to put in a sidewalk that hugged the, um, their wall to get them from their parking area to their, to their stairwell, to me, that would resolve the issue. But I think I have a hard time understanding, uh, looking at it of how the stairs aren't the bigger issue. Um, but again, I'm not in that position. So I'm kind of in the mindset of, I think, I think it's reasonable to, that if the owners wanted to put a sidewalk in to get to their parking area that's level, it's a hardscape, I don't see what the conflict with that would be. I think it would replicate what was there before, uh, and it lets them safely get to their parking area without the risk of coming out to the road and making the loop. But that's not what was requested. Um, I did propose that to the owners, they did not ask for that. They asked for an entire area to be paved. I don't know if that's the least impactful solution, um, but I do understand why that's being proposed. I'm not concerned about precedent because I think that we have to accommodate those who are in positions, uh, least fortunate. And I don't think that, I, I, I would very comfortably say no to just about everyone. But I think if you, if someone came to us and demonstrated a recognized disability, I, I would have a hard time not making, uh, not permitting an accommodation that the owner then would be responsible for paying for. So that's kinda where I'm at, I don't know if that was persuasive.
Michael Ray, when did they buy this house?
Uh, last summer.
So they knew about the lawn and the stairs?
They did, they thought it was their property. So when they purchased the house, when they purchased the house, they thought that the entire area in front of their house was theirs. And it was their intention to pave it. And it wasn't until they came and asked a question about it that they even learned that their property line didn't end at the road, but ended at their stairs or close to their stairs. So it was their intention when they bought to pave it.
Okay, uh, sort this mess out a little bit. If I ever were going to agree to some kind of precedent, it would only be for the narrow case of a disability. However, there are two things in your, that you see, that you discussed there, Mr. Jeffries. Um, one was that they bought this property. Now, you, you are constructively charged with the knowledge of what your boundaries are when you purchase a piece of property because it is publicly available information. So there's a, there's a, by a matter, by legal construct, you are charged with that knowledge. In other words, the law pretends you know it. That's one thing. Secondly, you have presented to them an alternative that may not encroach at all on town property, depending on where that exact boundary is, where their property ends. And I think that they have a duty to exhaust exploration of that possibility before coming to us with this one. So I may be inclined to deny it overall, period, but I certainly think they need to exhaust that alternative or explore that alternative that you presented before we hear their actual request.
Is it advisable at this point for us to proceed with a denial? Because it sounds as if a majority of the board would vote to deny, which I do not have a problem taking that, accepting that motion and, and voting, um, with the board on that. But is the appropriate course at this point for, to deny or to indicate back to the homeowners that we are inclined to deny and would urge them to, uh, instead come up with an alternative solution?
I think effectively, there's no difference.
There's effectively no diff, no difference, but I think that a future.
The request would be denying this request. If they came back with another request, you know, we could certainly hear it independently 'cause it's not the same request.
Okay.
So.
I, I would feel comfortable if the board had a motion tonight, uh, if we had a motion, uh, to deny the request.
I'll make that motion. Uh, and I'll just preface it by saying, yes, exactly sort of what Mr. Alonso said. Um, for the sake of finality, on this request at this time, yes. I, I move to deny the, uh, request of the residents at two forty-three Summer Street as presented.
And I second it.
Okay. I'm thinking about how I'm going to vote. Any additional discussion?
As you decide how to vote, realize we're talking about this request at this time. Nothing presents them from coming back to us with a new request in the future.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, no additional discussion, as many as are in favor of the motion. And again, so a positive vote is a, is a, a vote in the affirmative is a vote to deny. Um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, those opposed, no. Uh, the motion passes, the request is denied. All right. Town manager performance evaluation. So, uh, the, the composite evaluation for the town manager is presented to the select board this evening. It is in the Google Drive. Uh, I do have a question, uh, now that the composite is compiled. I do have a question if we can go to page ten, uh, on part four. When it comes to goals, is it, is, is it common for us to identify these goals or does the town manager, um, complete this portion of the eval? I, I noted these goals on the first page, but I did not, um.
We've not discussed goals and it's typically after the evaluation is complete.
Okay, all right.
Historically, this was not part of the evaluation. The goals were part of, after the post-election, post-.
Yeah.
Acceptance of the composite evaluation.
Okay. All right, so this, as this being the first presentation to the board of the composite, what I would ask is for, um, all, we will provide our individual evaluations. Uh, they will be printed and made available in the, uh, in our office, in the town manager's office. Has anyone already had the chance to look at them? Okay?
I have, I have, yeah.
All right, so they will be available over the course of the next week. Again, um, if you have any suggestions for modifications, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. But as we have this discussion next week, we need to be very careful to not specifically reference, uh, what is in our own evaluation so that they, that way they do not become a public record and that the composite remains as the public record. All right, so we'll discuss this next week. And, all right, we're gonna do a brief review and assessment of our own goals. All right, let me go ahead and get to them. Why am I blinking?
I've sure missed hearing them every month.
Say again?
I've sure missed hearing our goals every month, the recap.
Rush, what do they labelize in the drive? 'Cause I keep missing them.
FY twenty-three Select Board Goals.
There we go.
They're right there, they're right there.
Why would you name them so cryptically?
They're so hard to find.
What are you doing to me? All right, so, uh, we're gonna go through our goals, kinda do a recap. And then at the very end, I would like for us to kinda take a moment and just kinda do any self-reflection that we have, you know, I think working, you know, a board is a small group, small group dynamics. And I think it's healthy and necessary to give, uh, feedback of any on what we can do, um, to be, um, to work better together. So our first objective was to continue to pursue projects acceptable to the town regarding the property and building at Thirty School Street, which is a continuation of our fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two Select Board Goal Objective One with modified actions. So Action One was to oversee the hazardous material abatement and demolition of the old primary school through weekly updates and timeline review with the town manager. Uh, I think it's fair to say that that action is complete. Our second action was to seek public engagement to review and evaluate landscape architect plans for potential resubmission at the two thousand twenty-three Annual Town Meeting. Uh, we, um, did not choose to do that, I think, given the financial climate that we were in. Uh, Action Number Three was to create a working title that provides a clear, unique purpose and benefit to residents. And Action Four was to communicate funding sources distinct from Marshall Park Project. If I can speak to Action Four for a moment. You know, one of, I, I mentioned this, uh, in, in private conversation with Mr. Alonso, uh, but I did not mention this obviously to the majority of the board, so I'll say it, um, you know, it's appropriate for me to say it now. Then I think that one of the conversations, I did reach out, as we know, we have some very big companies in town that do, uh, land removal, earth removal. Um, and they also have some really big machinery. And so, you know, one of the ideas is, and I'll talk to the town manager about this as well. And I apologize that normally I preface, I, I do run most things by the town manager in advance, um, but I didn't run this one by you. So I think the idea, the idea is looking at some things that have happened in other communities. Um, I think it would be beneficial, given the certain industries that are unique to our town or that are really big here, that we may wanna look into having a conversation at some point in the beginning part of June with some of our, um, some of the business, um, big businesses that we have here in town. Uh, there is likely an. There is likely an opportunity for us to create a RFP process that would allow us to receive support on certain parcels of property. For example, it would be great if we can get some businesses in town to support us with the regrading and planting, et cetera, at 30 School Street, potential expansion at parking lot, looking at the Saliba property, the intention there is to have some fields. We know that there's a need for more fields. We know that Marshall Park is a project that we all fully support and they're going to need a lot of support with regrading, that, that there may be some land that the town owns that would be of interest in terms of earth removal to some of our earth removal companies. And that we may be able to structure an RFP in which we can, in exchange for removal at certain sites and giving rights for five years or 10 years to remove sand or gravel at certain locations, that in exchange for that and whatever that profit from that would be, that we could get work done at a much lower cost or offset the cost with work at other locations. And in my initial reach out to certain individuals in our community, there is interest if the town were willing to sit down and have that conversation. And we may be able to format this in a way to get our needs met with some businesses that are in town, again, doing it in a way that does not run afoul of public procurement laws.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
Yeah, doing it in a way that does not run afoul of public procurement. And so, you know, more conversation to be had, but I think there may be a creative way to kind of get to a, a result here. And again, I, I can provide with the town manager examples where other communities have found a way to do stuff like this. So that's my comment. Objective number two is to work with the town manager and finance director to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption or abatement. I think we can say success. So all the different actions that we have had here, you know, the final actions, repair town meeting warrant article detailing the final proposal for town consideration that passed. I think our objective was complete there. And then our third overall goal or objective was to review our bylaws and propose updates for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. We did not complete that objective, but we did complete the majority of the actions or half the actions. So we did review our policies and procedures. We also reviewed in some form, started to review our bylaws, but I know that a lot of this was planned for the spring.
I tracked.
And we spent many, many hours on, on the tax crisis that our town unfortunately was faced this year. All right. And then as a comment, does anyone have any commentary in general about things that we can do going forward to work better together?
I will say that in, while it was mutually decided upon among all of us to abandon goal number one, I hope at some point we come back to that because I think we're missing another opportunity. I realize with other projects coming at the same time why we did it, but I would like to, you know, not have, it's good that we don't have vacant building that's falling down. That's good. Yeah, I'm not so, think it's, I don't think it's so great that we're going to have an empty lot not doing anything either. So hopefully we'll be able to come up with some plan for that going forward in the near future.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to second that. And, you know, every once in a while, for all the baloney that is on Facebook, there are some nuggets once in a while. And there, there, you know, people have suggested, and I've sort of been behind this too, doing something relatively low cost with that space in the meantime, where, you know, if there is no long-term plan, having green space there, maybe having farmer's market over there, fixing up the parking a little bit, things that can be relatively low cost, but still make that a community space that's usable. So.
Okay.
Or Michael Ray's big vision of habitat is the, we have bees and such.
Pollinator habitat.
Pollinators, yeah.
Yeah, very important.
Yeah.
Yep. You know, I would offer, do you have any other general commentary?
Uh-uh.
I would offer as general commentary that, you know, this, this year has been incredibly challenging. And I know that when I first became chair, I, I think I sent Heather this like 20-point, it was about 20 points, wasn't it?
Probably.
At least 20 points. It was about a 20-point email that was like, here's all the things I want to get done.
What did you get done? How many points?
I think we probably got through about half, to be honest. So one of, you know, one of the, and so I, I want to highlight some areas of progress. You know, one area is I know that we have our Google Drive and, and, you know, I, I want to point out that Heather and the town, the town manager Heather, as well as Elaine, that going throughout the year, I think overall, most, a lot of information was in the drive in advance. And when things were coming in late, it was usually things that I was adding in at like 10 minutes before a meeting. So it was usually me. But I will say that I think that the availability of information for us, it has been a bit better. And, and that, you know, is just the applicants that come before us, there's a lot of things that go into that. We also had a calendar in that we, you know, really mapped out the whole year and how we're going to get from last May or June to this year in May and, and what we're going to do. Obviously, a calendar is a roadmap. I mean, once January hit, the whole thing went out the window. But we were pretty much on target going into January. And so it allowed us, I think, to have more workshops. And I think that was, that was a successful area. And then in this role, you know, something I've tried to do is really collaborate and reach out to other chairs. I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of different chairs in town. I'm sure that was done by all predecessors in this role. But it was certainly more Herculean than I probably recognized in the front end, was the amount of time that is spent in conversation trying to balance the varying needs that there are and trying to figure out a path forward that can have maximum buy-in. And, and so I, I am very grateful to Carol Harschenbo for the many conversations and engagements that we've had. You know, Dr. Burnham has also been, always takes my phone calls. There are many areas where I offered comments that were unrelated in many ways to the role of being on the select board, but just comments. And she was very receptive and the school committee was very receptive to, to most of them. You know, and then in addition to the residents, you know, Mr. Allison on the planning board, you know, Bob Pease on conservation, we've all, I've, as Mr. Franco has, had numerous conversations with the board of assessors this year. And so, and then adding in on our agenda, that collaborative time for any other board to come, I think that has really helped foster an improved relationship with the parks commissioners. I know that, that was an area where, where I think things were deteriorating a bit. And so it's an area where we've made some improvements. Certainly, I've had to call Mr. Alonso for advice, as I've called Mr. Toll for advice, as I've called Mr. Rogers for advice, and many other previous members of the select board. Because I think it, this role for me has been more challenging. But being overall, our feedback with each other, and then also I think we all know that I reach out to all of us and trying to, you know, when we had our, when we had tensions on the board, trying to help diffuse some of those tensions to get us to a better working point with one another. And so I think that this has, for me, this has been a really good year in terms of how well we're able to work together. It hasn't been a great year for the community. I'm not going to say it's been a great year, but it's been a good year for the board, I think, to work together. You know, we were under Mr. Alonso's leadership for the last three years. And I know that he and I have very similar hearts and intents, but very different styles about doing certain things. And so, you know, I certainly appreciate the grace, Tom, that you've shown me with even the way that I, you know, make motions or not or say things. And I think it's, you know, has been a slight change, but I think we've all worked really well over this past year together, really well. And one of the comments that I hear from our representatives, and all of them have said this, I probably shouldn't say this publicly, but I'm still going to do it anyway, they've all said that they really enjoy working with this select board, that we are very engaged, that we're on top of it, and that we are, we are one of, they've all said, we're the, like, the most professional select board of the communities that they serve. And so that's a huge reflection to the culture that has been established over time. And so it's been a pleasure. Do you want to offer us any comments or criticisms since your eval is already in the...
No, it's not yet.
She's going to wait till I get voted on. I think it's a smart move. All right. Do we have any other comments from any other members about working better together? All right. So with that, our next meeting is on the 23rd. I want to remind everyone that the Monday, the 29th, we have a Memorial Day program located right across from the Council of Aging, Senior Center, Adult Activity Center, Memorial Drive. So you may know it by one of those three names, but these days we're saying Adult Activity Center. So it's located right across the Adult Activity Center, Memorial Drive, again, May 29th. That's a Monday, Memorial Day itself at 10:00 a.m. As usual, it should be about a 35 to 40-minute program, rain or shine. And then this Saturday, as noted early on, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., we will have annual town elections. I will be at the polls at 5:00 p.m. to wait for the count. So if anyone who's running needs to get it, I will be there so that way I can congratulate our newest members to the select board. Do we have any public comments this evening from the town manager?
None.
Any public comments from the public? Ms. Lizio?
Ron Delisio, 181, Roseford, Room. I've just been sitting here thinking about numbers. So 25,000 square feet at TCP and 6,500 square feet in this building, that equals over $17 million for primarily community space. And we're only giving the school and town offices 10,000 square feet, which, I don't know, that, it just seems like a better idea to break them up to me and give them each a little more space in one building by renovating this room. And my last comment is, the town of Pepperell renovated their meeting room into offices. That's one community I know of that did it. And according to our bylaws, the historic value is on the exterior of the building. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lizio. All right. Any other public comments this evening from the public? All right. Any public comments from the board?
No.
I have none.
Just vote.
All right. Thank you all for attending with us. It is 9:20.
Wow, this is like the earliest meeting we've had.
It is 9:22. All right. So is, do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right. The time again is 7:23. We are now adjourned to those at home. We trust that you will have a wonderful evening. We encourage you again to vote this Saturday, your civic responsibility and duty, and a good way to get involved in our community. So please come out and vote many, many names on the ballot this Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the TCP Passios and have a wonderful...